He is out of town at the moment, enjoying himself. I won't tell you where. Tropical breeze, yes. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance by Kayden Anderson, Troop 1205, and our opening remarks by Councilwoman Diana Anderson. Kayden?
Hi.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Kayden, thank you. Diana, thank you. Forgot to mention, all council members are present. Item number four, approval of tonight's meeting agenda. Scott, do we have any adjustments or changes?
No changes.
Okay. That said, I'll take a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the agenda as written.
Motion by Ben, second by Lynn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, at this time, we have open session. Tonight, we have just one public hearing. So if you would like to comment on that item, we ask that you leave it to that timeframe. But anything else, feel free to come on up, and you have three minutes. Thank you. And, okay, seeing none, we'll close open session for tonight, and we'll move on to item six A, consent items. Do we have any questions, council?
I'll go ahead and move that we approve the consent items, consent agenda items.
Motion by Sid.
Second.
Second by Diana. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We will, let's see, we don't have any, item number seven, we don't have any board, commission, committee appointments, so we'll move right into number, item number eight, presentations, public, both these are public safety building design presentation by JRCA Architecture, and then item B is on public safety building budget update by, who's giving that?
So, to start on the building, we would like JRCA Architects to go over what the outside of the building's going to look like. So they have some, and Chris, are you, do you need to hook in here? I'll buy you a little time while, so they're going to set this up so that we can get some visual as what the outside of the building will look like. We actually have some of the materials that the building will be, the facade will look, and so we'll be able to hand some of those out to you, so council, you have a chance to kind of see what that's going to look like. And this is the recommendation of the Owners Committee. So as we've been working with the architects, architects recommended, here's a way for the building to look. The Owners Committee has looked at that, and they said, this looks good to us. And so their recommendation's going to be to the City Council that this is what we think the building should look like, but we would like for you to sign off on that. Part two of that is the budget, which, as we've been working, we meet every other week with our architect and our contractor. We review the budget in depth. Every, every two weeks, we have discussions regarding that. So the Owners Committee, at this point, wanted to make sure that we present where we're at currently on the budget with the City Council. They've asked me to represent them in giving those numbers. And so I'll go over the numbers, but we also wanted, I think, Guy Fugel and Dave Holdaway to say a couple things as well when I'm done, so that you, I want you to hear from the other people on the Owners Committee and just not me. So they can kind of give you their thoughts and feelings as to where we are in the process and how things are going.
Aye, Dave, you just let me know, and I'll cut him off.
So with that, we can turn it over to JRCA and Jim Child and let them take it from here.
Welcome, Jim.
Good. Well, thank you. Appreciate it. As Scott has mentioned, we have been meeting quite diligently with the committee to try to develop some direction to this on the exterior. We've also been trying to respond to your downtown, some of your downtown guidelines. And we've been working, working with planning folks to try to make sure that we're conforming with that. The building, you know, I won't take time here because we've already presented a lot with the plan and with the site plan and the general massing of the building, but we wanted to talk mainly about some materials here. And what we have, what we are looking at here is, we're trying to focus a lot of the detail type functions, and maybe if you, Chris, why don't you pull the fire station up too, so you can kind of see the similar kinds of things going on there? Let's go over to the fire station. And the, whoops, okay. That you can see here, and what we've, again, the lower, the first ground level is where, again, we've tried to, as I say, deal with more, a little more detail, a little more, basically, you'll spend a little more money at that level. Then as you get up to the upper levels, it gets a little simpler, the, some of the shapes and forms. We've, working with a base on this building that you can see here, this is a cast stone-like product that's, you'll see here in the front here, that we're looking to wrap these with and use. The material that you see on all of the columns and coming up and around through some of these areas here is the solid color masonry that you see there. With it, what we've looked at doing, though, in some of these areas into here, and so you'll see it a little bit more on the justice facility, too. We've actually brought in a little bit of a blend to help set those areas off, just a little bit. There's a blend with, we've brought in some of the darker brick in the patterning that you see there with that. These other materials that you'll see on this area here and here are all pretty much, those are, those are a precast concrete material that we're dealing with here, so that, again, it's in keeping with the character of what we're trying to, what we're trying to accomplish here, but, and very durable materials and such. You can see that we've tried to create this rhythm, this pilasterine effect throughout the building. Maybe if you can jump back over to the justice facility there. This same patterning, this pilasterine effect here. As you come up through there, these are set back in a few inches, and then as you come back through here, these corbeled out to this area here. Again, we've gone, we've taken this stone-like material that you see and have brought that in a larger scale here. We still have some of the pilasterine, some of the recesses that we have happening here with it. And so then, as, again, as you go up, up onto the second story areas, same materials, but used in a little simpler fashion here. We've tried to bring in the arch effect that you see on these windows and some of them over on the fire station area there. It's really, it's really kind of trying to address a little bit of what was and what has been on this site with the, or, you know, will have been on this site with the, with the old gymnasium there, the recreation building, and some of the arch effects of those windows, and then some of the other guidelines that you've seen with Main Street that you're trying to accomplish there. So, as I say, those are some of the, that's the really quick, general overview. As I say, some of these, these materials have been presented with the, with your committee, and this is the recommendation that they're bringing forth to you, but we wanted to bring it forth to you before we move on to the Downtown Advisory Board and such as that.
Is it all right if we move them up here so the public can kind of see them? Is that okay? It's going to be kind of hard, but at least we can.
Sure. Yes. Strictly, strictly to create a little bit of difference in the feeling of the building here and focus, like I say, some of those detail elements more down at the personal level where you're walking on the street there, and then it'll be a little simpler up on the top. I don't want to say that it's a budgetary thing, but a little bit of that is. Yes, you're going to put your, put your money down there where people are walking by it and see it. That's, that's, that's a little bit of what we're trying to do.
Thank you.
Yes.
We, we.
Comments, questions?
Just questions or comments from the City Council on what you see?
The direction that we're headed there with that.
We'll just go down. Ben, do you have any? Lynn?
I think it looks great.
So, bringing that fire station back up, there's one other, the other thing we were trying to do with the fire station. You'll see, this is that lobby area, and I saw the, I saw the historic fire truck sitting out here in the parking lot as I walked in. This would actually be an overhead door that we can bring that fire truck into that lobby and park it there, so it'll be parked there and get it in and out as needed for different events, so that's one of, one of the features of that we're trying to do. Yes. Oh, these recesses right here, yes. Again, we're trying to add a little more detail at the level where people are walking by the building, walking up to the building as you approach the building. This is done with a, a little, we would recess the masonry right there, you'll see that. It's the same masonry effect there, using, integrating some of that dark, a little bit of darker in there and recessing those. You can see those happen all the way across to help add a little emphasis to those.
Dave, did that, Dave, was that okay?
Mm-hmm. Is that, is that, yeah, if you're good with that. So, yeah, we'll let.
Any others, council? It looks good.
We'll let Dave, Dave add to it here. Did you want to say anything, Dave, more?
I appreciate the fact that we're trying to tie this historical aspect of winning and event. It's very difficult to do with the budget.
Jim's paid by the word. He'll keep going if we want him to.
No, 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 it's been a long day. I'm important happy to sit down.
We, yes, go ahead, we, yeah.
Well, some of them are, again, this arched window is one of the major ones. The idea of the, the rhythm of the pilasters going around the building is very much, is very much a part of that. The, the base, the wainscot, is also bringing that historic theme into it. And then just the, using the heavier lentils and sills in the window systems, they're all part of that historic theme. We've also tried to, as I say, get at the top of these areas right here and some of these areas, we've actually brought in a corbeling where the brick starts back a couple of inches and then steps out for about three courses to get out to where it is. That's also very much a historic detail that you'll find in a lot of the historic structures around. So, so all of those, we've tried to kind of bring all of those elements together in a way that, as I say, is where you'll really notice them, where you can really see them.
Thank you, Jim. Did, were we going to let Guy and Dave get up, or you guys want?
They're, they're going to get up after I'm done.
Okay, let's go first, Scott.
Are we done?
Yep.
Okay, give me a minute here, and I'll pull up the budget. I'll need to go to.
Scott, are you looking for this? Scott, are you looking for this?
Yes.
Sorry.
All right, there we are. So I think most people are knowledgeable of the history as we've gone through this building and trying to get it funded to a point of getting us a building that we feel can last us a long, long time in this community. So, we've had discussions about the square footage needs to meet our needs today, but also as we peek into the future a little bit, that as we continue to grow as a community, that there's hopefully not a whole lot more that we'll need to do to the building to accommodate that growth. So that's been something that we've discussed quite extensively. If you look at the top part of that, it says the available project funds. These are the monies right now that are in the budget, as I would say. So we have a general obligation bond voted on by the people of Pleasant Grove last November. The total amount was for nine and a half million dollars. We take out our, our, in essence, our closing costs and things out of that. So the money dedicated to the building's just a little more than 9.3 million. We also have about $955,000 of impact fee funds that we've collected over the last few years. And we have a piece of property that was bought with impact fee funds years ago that is for sale, has been for sale for a couple of years. And we feel that, we've had a couple offers on it, but things have fallen through on the, on the buyer's side, so we haven't quite got that sold, but that will be money, when that property is sold, that will go towards the building, so we account for it here. We also have what I would just call additional city funds potentially available. That's $400,000. Those are monies that we have, as I've looked at our budget and looked at what we have in the future, that, for instance, we have a couple capital projects that we've funded this year that might be better served to be earmarked towards the building. And then we have some additional monies that we will be getting as we've closed, closed out our fiscal year of 2017 at the end of June, and we'll know in a couple months how much money of revenue we had over expenditure. And generally, that's money that we turn around and put right back into capital. What is being recommended from the Owners Committee and from myself is that we earmark that money towards the building. So that's about $400,000 that we're estimating at this point. The last line on there is donations. These are donations that have been confirmed. We have verbal commitments on this money. And quite honestly, it's hard for me to see that with just, without a lot of gratefulness of people that are very generous in our community, that they are willing to donate at this point, $1,935,000. Without these donations, I don't know if this, this project would be extremely different. Our square footage would have to be cut back drastically, and these donations have been very critical in meeting the needs of our community, not only today, but for also in the future. So when we look at the total available funds, we have 13,162,386. I just want people to keep in mind that we are still, this, this budget, particularly when we get on the expense side, is still a little bit in flux. We are continuing to figure out ways to cut costs and to save money, because I'll show you here in a minute that we still have a funding gap that we haven't quite filled. The, probably the key moment will be when we bid this project out, which I think will be in October or maybe early November, and then we will sit down with the contractor and figure out what we would call a guaranteed maximum price. And so in essence, at that point, we, we determine a number that they need to deliver the building at that number. Once we have the guaranteed maximum price, we're going to be locked in on a lot of our costs. Now, not all, because we have some soft costs that come with that, but we will be locked in on a lot of that. So as we scroll down, these are some of the other costs. These are the, this is the expense side of the budget. So, we have a reallocation of the fire department, and that's also community development. We have $130,000. That's going to cover the cost of rent for the upcoming year and a couple minor changes that we need to make to the buildings. We also have a demolition cost of $150,000 for these facilities. Now, that hasn't been bid yet. That's a construction estimate that we have right now in order to do that. Under construction budget, we have a CMGC estimate of $12,204,808. Now, I'm going to go to another document here that's going to break that down, just so we know what we have in front of us here. If you look at the top under subtotal, it says 49,895,000 square feet. And sorry, this isn't the most clear document, but I think it's going to get us where we need to go. So we're just under 50,000 square feet. Now, I'm going to, as we get a little bit more, we're going to see that we've reduced that a little bit as well. And I don't know, Jim, do you remember what Think Architecture, were they at 52 or something? Was it? So, we had Think Architecture go through an exercise with our staff to, again, help us with a cost estimate as we were preparing for the bond. Think Architecture had a square footage number, and as they sat down with JRCA, they were able to reduce that number again, which would save us quite a bit of money. What you see, number one through 14, would be the construction costs, or what we call the sticks and bricks number, which is $10,626,242. So that's our cost estimate as of a couple weeks ago. That number can change depending on, as we look at particular value engineering and things like that as we continue to try to lower our budget gap, but that's what our number is as of today. So this also has general conditions for the contractor, which is 560,000. So when you add the general conditions with the construction costs, we're at just over $11 million on that subtotal. We also have some insurance requirements. We have some money in there for what we call weather allowance as we will be starting construction, likely at the, in early December. So if we have some bad weather, that could cause some problems, and so we have a contingency number in there. And then on the bottom of that is the contractor's contingency and the contractor's fee, which are set by percentage. The contractor's contingency is something that we, that we have as we look to get our guaranteed maximum price and because subcontractors today in two months might be a little bit more. And so that money's in there to help cover some of that. I think our contractors and architects would agree that construction right now is, it's, there's a lot going on. And so the bidding is going to be pretty interesting as we get into that phase of it. So if you look at that bottom number, 12,204,808, that correlates back to this number right here, 12,204,808. So built into this, 12,204, 204,000, 12 million, sorry, 12,000. I've made that mistake before. I don't think our contractor will agree we can get it for that price. Here are some things that we have already, in essence, value engineered out of the building. And the focus of the, of the Owners Committee, and I'm going to have Guy and Dave will talk a little bit about this, is we are doing our best to not give up any square footage. If there's things on the outside of the building that we can compromise at this point and not give up square footage, then that's what's on this list. So we, we were going to have secure parking around the facility. At this point, the security gates and fence are not part of the budget. They're not part of the project. When we bid the, the project, we will have alternate bids for these items, so that if the funding, if we get some more donations or things like that and the funding comes through, then we will be able to add some of these things back into the project. But when we look at our numbers right now, we have pulled these out of the project. We were looking at a west access drive. We talked about that a couple weeks ago. That's just on the other side of where the old rec is now, would be a second access into the fire station. Right now, that, that is not funded in the project. And then we were going to attach a restroom to the police station on the west side of that building that would face the downtown park. And right now, we've pulled that out of the budget as something that, that isn't going to fit. Initially, we had talked about taking two ambulance bays out, which would have saved $546,000. And as we got down to it, we figured we can lose one bay. There's still issues losing one, but losing two just really isn't in the cards. We need to have at least five bays. So as of right now, we initially had six bays planned. We're now down to five bays. And so this has been pulled out of the budget, the 273,000. So from this 12,204, we've pulled 530,000 out. So our number now is $11,674,377. You can see that we have some of the soft costs. We have our architectural fee, our FFNE, furnishings, fixture and equipment, which right now is just a percentage. We have a design fee for the furnishings. We have our geotech, site survey, those are small numbers. And then we have our construction testing at 58,000. So when you add those costs into this number right here, we get 13,629,108. Now, I do want to point out, right now, we're carrying a 5% contingency. This is money that, as they get into construction, if they start digging and they find something that is going to cause a problem, like maybe an old tennis court or something like that that is rumored to be buried here somewhere, that might be an additional cost as we, we take that out. So that's a typical contingency at this point. So if we don't have any contingency, great. This number goes right back into the building. Generally speaking, I don't know many projects that don't use contingencies, but just need to be aware. There is a number there. But when you add all this up, this right now currently is part of the budget. We're short $466,722. As we continue through this process, part of this is that a lot of the revenue numbers are settled and set. So that number's set, this number's set, this number could go up slightly depending on what we sell the land for, but it's not going to be much. This number has a potential to go up depending on how the revenues come in this past year and maybe even this year if we need to do that. Those are, I would say, kind of last, those would be things I think we do as a last resort. And we know that there's some more potential donations. The honorary colonels are hosting a fundraiser on September 13th, and they have some people that have expressed interest in donating in the building, and we will hopefully receive some further donations. Now, is that going to make up our gap of 466,000? I don't know. I'd be surprised if, if that were the case. So we are still in the process of trying to, to bridge that gap. We've talked about some of the value engineering. We've already done some. So without trying to give up square footage, now we're talking about, you know, our heating and air conditioning systems and some of these internal guts of the building that sometimes you, you might have to take a little bit of a lesser approach. It might hurt efficiencies in the long run, but in the short term, that's one way to get the cost down. So we haven't fully gotten through that process yet as we're still continuing in the design phase, but there'll be some exercises in order to, to work through that. So as of today, that's where our funding gap is, and we're hoping to have that figured out really by the end of the year as we get ready to bid the project. So that's a lot of talking. Is there any questions in regards to the budget?
Counsel? Looks like nothing.
Yep.
Yeah, we, we want to try and keep this just up here, discussion, but throw your name out really quick.
My name is Rex Jackson.
Thanks, Rex.
Are there plans to be able to add those in the future, or is it now or never?
Yeah, that's, and that's a great question. Part of these are things that could be added as capital projects later. So let's say, three years from now, we go through our, we have a couple hundred thousand dollars in capital money available. These things would come back on the list for consideration. They would be up against park improvements, road improvements, other improvements that we use our capital money for. So, you know, at that point, they're kind of, you know, being scrutinized against a lot of other needs in the city. But those things could come back. The only thing that probably is, once it's gone, it's gone, is probably the fire bay. The building is not being designed in order to add an additional bay in the future. Talking with Chief Thomas, you know, I don't know if, if that means there's going to be a future satellite station. If we work something out with Lone Peak Fire and we have access to their station, that would be a great scenario if that were possible. Those things, as of today, are. Those things, as of today, are something that we just can't hang our hat on. But the park restroom, west access drive, those things could all be put back in a, at a future time. If we get our funding gap, for instance, some of these things, we get this figured out, and then we have some contingency money left over, the council could allocate that back into some of those before the project's over. So there are options to bring that back in.
Counsel?
So, I do have a question. Was the restroom, was that a complete and total structure outside, or was it an inside structure with an outside exterior entrance?
Yeah, the way it was gonna be designed is that there would be an outside entrance, it would be attached to the building, but there would not be a way to get from the restroom into the main building.
Correct. But that was still an exterior, an entire exterior structure?
Yes.
Okay.
And it would fit nice, it would look nice with the building. What we're gonna do is we'll make sure that that's plumbed, as they do the building, so that in the future, if we wanted to add on and put those restrooms in, it would be all set up, ready to go.
Okay. Construction testing. What does that mean?
Jim, do you wanna answer that? I'll turn it over to the experts for that.
What that is, is during projects like this, you have a lot of testing that is done, as far as compression test, or compaction testing on the earthwork, strength testing on concrete, steel testing that's done. What is the norm, is that the owner, to maintain an arm's length from the contractor, who is not, so he's not doing, paying for testing of his own work.
Got it.
The owner usually separates that from the contractor, and does that themselves.
If it's okay, we'll turn it over to a couple other members of our owner's committee, and we'll let them say a few words.
Right.
We used to say when we were younger, age before beauty, or beauty before age, or something.
I see that all the time up here.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to be a member of the owner's committee. This has been a real satisfying experience for me, and just to get involved in something in the community. I, you know, give a compliment to Scott, and you notice how straightforward it is about the budget. We're not sugarcoating any of this. You know, we're not trying to hide anything under the carpet here. This is real numbers, this is real, these are real facts. You know, it'd be nice to come in and tell you what you'd like to hear, and say, well, we're, you know, we can do anything. But we're trying to be very practical about what can be done with the funds that we think can become available. However, we're committed to make it work. And that's gonna take effort during, now that we're getting into more detailed design efforts on the building, and looking at, as Scott talked about, materials, systems, even after we've bid the contract, the successful contractor could come in and try to help us find some ways to value engineer and make the thing so it's not so expensive. However, in looking at the plans, not only the exterior, but the floor plans and so on, I think the architect, along with the members of the committee, and the department heads that have got their input into the project, have really tried to come up with something that's functional, that not only for the city employees, but also for the public that come in and use the building. I think that will add a tremendous amount of efficiency, based on the facilities that we currently have, and I think it'll improve morale. I think it, there is room for growth. I'm not gonna say that if the city grows to be 50,000, 60,000, 70,000 people, that the buildings will be totally adequate. But I really think that they, we're looking at the future, that we can make it work. And we've even talked about how to reconfigure some of the spaces, if we get growth, and consolidate people within smaller areas, and things like that, to make it work. And you never know what technology's gonna do in the future. Maybe we'll all sit at home and not have an office building. So, anyway, we think it's gonna be really, really good. We're gonna make every effort we can to economize on material and labor costs. However, that said, I think the building needs to reflect stability and permanence in the community. And I really compliment the architects on the way the buildings look. Because Scott made this comment in one of our meetings, and I think it's very true. Twenty or 30 years from now, people are gonna walk by or drive by these buildings, and they're not gonna worry about, what did they cost, or what efforts did we go through to get them built, or, you know, all of the travail that it takes to get something like this done. Do they reflect the community, and are they functional, and are they useful to the community? And in fact, I think to a large extent, the community is kind of judged by their public spaces and their public buildings. And I think that these will add to the image of the community, if that's important to anybody. But I think it'll also really provide the kind of service and structures that we need to move forward. And so, I just wanted to assure the council that, from my standpoint at least, I think we've tried to be as scrutinizing as we can be, as we've gone to this point in the design, and there's more of that to come in the future. And I think we can get a building that'll, buildings, plural, that will really, really be an asset to our community, and to those that are gonna use these buildings. And so, we'll keep doing our best. Well, they say you can't make blood, get blood out of a turnip, but we're trying. So any questions anybody has, that I can help you with?
We're just grateful for what you do, and it's impressive. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Enjoy doing it.
Thanks, Dave.
All that guy who really knows what's going on.
No, Dave knows what's going on. I appreciate working with Dave, because he's, and really, the outside of it, we would have liked to have done more, but it's just not in the budget. So it's really, you know, it's really sad. It's really a bare bones budget, that basically, we're still short a million dollars, but for just the basic, to meet our basic needs. So if you think back a couple of years, you know, other than, construction costs have just really raised considerably, and we hope we, they don't raise anymore before we go, and maybe it'll be a good bidding time, when some subs are looking for work. But really, if we, you look at the past there, really, it's a $14 million project. So if you go back to the previous bond, you know, Mocha was right on it, $14 million. And so, and it's, and we've had some generous donors, but the thing about it, if we would have put the money into, had the bond money to do this, those generous donors would have been putting that money into other things we don't have funded in our community, to update things, from our swimming pool to other things, but it's going just through our basic public safety building. But anyway, so I appreciate working with Big D and our architect, because they've come up with a lot of good solutions, and cost-saving things, and we ask, well, what if you really build it a different way? And they says, well, we could build it a different way, but it's not gonna last very long. Basically, we're building it to last. Thank you for your time, and thank for the opportunity to be part of this great project.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Guy.
So, Guy, Dave, Jim, Chief, Scott, Big D, I know they're not here, thank you, for the hard work that you've done to this point. We really appreciate it. Mayor's not here, but yeah, I'm sure he'd echo those thoughts too, so thank you.
Just for clarification for the scouts that don't know, this is Guy Fugel, and Dave Holdaway, who have both served for a lot of years to our community. And I just wanna say one thing about the donors. We kind of chuckled, because some communities go to their wealthy citizens and ask for a cherry on top, and we go and ask for dispatch. But for you young boys, there are wealthy people in town who have donated, as of right now, what's our number?
1.9.
1.9, so almost $2 million to cover a gap. So, I think that sometimes you need to just be grateful, just, there's a lot of really good people in town.
Do you have anything else on this?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you again.
We'll let the architects go, they-
Yeah.
They have other cities to go to.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, if you wanna leave them. Okay, yeah. We'll keep track of them, thanks.
Okay. So, moving on to public hearing items, we have one public hearing items, 9A. This is continued public hearing to consider for adoption of ordinance 2017-37, amending the city code 10-12-Article A, Business and Manufacturing Park Zone, BMP, by revising and reorganizing the provisions regarding permitted and conditional uses, as well as various zoning requirements, and providing for effective date. And Daniel, are you presenting on this one?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll give you a few seconds here.
Do we need to plug your, is your presentation on that computer?
No, it's from here.
Just hit the F7 button. Back in the old days, we'd just hand out a bunch of paper to everybody, so they could follow along.
But we're the city of trees.
Yeah, that's right. Not used trees, right?
I think I am.
Number five? There you go.
Daniel, how are you doing tonight?
Not to myself. Never drink the bottle of water before my presentation again. Other than that, I'm doing pretty good.
Hang on, Marty's gonna come help you.
Okay.
When we hired Daniel, we forgot to give him the computer quiz, to make sure that he knew how to do all this stuff.
They forgot to give me a computer at all. This is brand new.
That's a good comeback, Daniel.
That's how we roll.
Thank you so much for your patience. Really, really appreciate that. The preparation test would have been better. I need a laser. A laser.
Oh, sorry, I took it.
Sorry about that. Apologize. Mayor, pro temp, counsel, this following item is for a code amendment for an entire, there you go, for an entire zone. The applicant, it's Preston Davis. It only took me three meetings to get his name right. That's actually how you write it, without the E right there. And so, the proposal was to amend City Code Section 1012, Article 8, which is a whole zone, is the BMP zone. Let me go to this map. There we go. So Pleasant Grove City has set apart two types of zones that are specific for the use of industrial use. So, right now, we have the MD zone, which is the manufacturing distribution zone, and we have the BMP zone, the business and manufacturing park. The MD zone is the most intense zone that we have in the city. That's the one that has the least requirements for design standards, the least requirements for landscape, but it's the one that has the most intense uses. So if someone wants to kill a cow and get some mistakes, that's the zone that you can do that, right? That's the zone with the most intense use. That's the zone where we can have mining uses, that's the zone that we can have, let me see, dairy products uses. So this is our most intense zone. This zone, it is, according to our general plan, in the manufacturing land use. However, this zone was designed to be, kind of, to give a park-like atmosphere, a business park-like atmosphere. So it was designed with big or large requirements for setbacks, for landscapes, and even for water features. So this zone requires pretty much what Close to My Heart has done in this corner, that big of a setbacks, right? If we travel around the city, Close to My Heart is the one that has the biggest setback. And right in front of it, we have some sort of like a fountain, there's roads to connect between the development. So this entire zone was developed, or was drafted, or thought for fitting something as Close to My Heart. Now, for the last year, for the last year and a half, applicants have approached staff with desires and intents to develop in this zone. However, based on the requirements, which in many cases have resulted to be very cumbersome, they have retracted from it. Okay? Let me give you a better view of how, let me see. Now we just got frozen. There we go. Okay, so that will give us an idea of how the whole BMP was, the whole zone BMP is right now. So right now, the BMP zone is 70 acres. It's all this yellow square right here, okay? Out of those 70 acres, there's only, right now, six lots. So we have Close to My Heart, that goes all the way to right here, that's their lot or parcel right now. We have three lots, right here, and this is the actual road access to them. We have, it's called this, Spectrum Academy, thank you so much, Spectrum Academy, and another lot right here. So out of those six lots, two are already developed, but these three, no. Now, if we decide, or if we apply the setbacks, the existing setbacks, to these lots, it's really difficult to develop. To give you an idea, the front setback is 50 feet, okay? The back setback is 25. So that gives you 75 feet of area that need to be just for landscape. It's a little cumbersome. And now, in there, we need to fit a building, we need to fit parking, so it's been a little difficult. So, discussions were, took place between the property owners, especially from these three parcels right here, the four parcels, the ones that have not been developed, and they approached the staff, and they were trying to see how to be able eventually to develop those lands. The idea of rezoning came to the table, and it's not a crazy idea, based that the general plan even allows for this part of the BMP to be rezoned as an MD. However, going back to the, going back to, I'm gonna go, let me, give me one second. Okay. Going back to the zoning map, the BMP plays a very important- Going back to the zoning map, the BMP plays a very important role in Pleasant Grove. From the staff perspective, the BMP plays the role of a buffer between the most intense use zone in the city and what I like to call the jewel in the crown of Pleasant Grove, which is the Grove. So, the rezoning didn't go very far, and staff didn't recommend to go forward with the rezon. What we did instead, for more than a couple months, was to work on amended the existing BMP with two ideas in mind. Number one, to allow for more uses, light manufacturing uses, uses that did not take into consideration the processing or the manufacturing of raw materials. So, those were not taken into consideration, but some uses were added to the permitted uses right now in the BMP zone. And number two, we, I tried to, staff tried to balance the landscape requirements from the Grove and apply them to the BMP zone. That way, we, let me see, that way, staff was trying to, came with this idea to, or the amendments came with the idea of to incentivize new developments without compromising some of the already designed standards established in the Grove. So, what we tried to do was a mix. Now, here's a couple of the things that, of the amendments that staff and the applicant proposed. So, these amendments came to be during the process of about five months. So, we worked on this. The applicant proposed something, the staff proposed something, and then we tried to meet in the middle. Again, staff never compromised the design standards that I think that are needed to create that buffer between those two zones. Some of the things that the staff proposed was, for example, the inclusion of new uses, again, light manufacturing uses. In your staff report, there's a big list of uses. All the ones in red are the ones that were added to. Again, staff review each one of the uses and make sure that none of those use raw materials to be part of, to be, that did not, yeah. The staff make sure that no uses that includes the processing of raw materials were included as permitted uses. Another step that staff took to amend this zone was to include open storage use for merchandise display. So, right now, the BMP zone does not allow anything to be displayed outside of a building. The MD zone allows for something. So, again, we met in the middle, and we say, well, merchandise, merchandise display is allowed based on the following design standards, and staff creating some standards. For example, the build of a wall, the requirement that the display of merchandise needed to be on the backyard or on the side yard, not on the front yard. So, ideas like that came also that are in your staff report. Another step that staff took in order to amend this was to reduce the setbacks. I have a table that will give us an idea of how these setbacks were reduced. Now, let's keep in mind that my goal is never being capricious on coming out with numbers and just assign them, but what I did in this case was to take some of the setbacks from the Grove and just apply them here, and take some of the setbacks from the manufacturing zone and apply them. But this is the result of the proposed reduced setbacks. For example, right now, the existing ordinance for the BMP requires for any lot to have a frontage of 100 feet.
Holy smoke.
So, what staff recommends is to reduce that. Again, this was with intent of creating a park-like atmosphere, a business park atmosphere. So, staff is proposing to go to 40 feet, which is the same requirement for the manufacturing zone. The buffer yards along major roads, including the front yard, was 50 feet. Staff is going, proposes to go to 25. Side yard was 20, and now, staff proposed to go to 10. This is very important. The area of landscape was, the existing requirement is 30%, which is quite a lot. The Grove requires 10%. The MD requires 5%. So, we were trying again to reach in the middle, so we came with that number. Now, all this have been reviewed by the staff, and the applicant has agreed on all these new proposed setbacks. So, that's an idea of, kind of like, the things that we did.
So, Daniel, can I ask, 'cause I don't see in the staff report, what is the specific business that he, that the applicant is requesting?
Okay. The applicant is not the property owner, but the applicant is a Realtor. And what he's trying to do is trying to sell these lands for a developer to come, so that's why he brought us an array of uses. He doesn't have one specific in mind. But, for example, the use of merchandise, the display of merchandise was brought to the table because he brought the idea that John Deere wanted to come to the city, and then he needed a place where to show some of their products. Again, this is not gonna be raw materials, so we're not gonna have a bunch of dirt or animal compost just right there in a corner, but what we're trying to do is allow for that to happen with control, with design standards. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah? Okay. So, he doesn't have one, he, the applicant, again, brought way more than what's already in the list, but at the end, that's when we met in the middle, and that's where we agree. This item came to the planning commission three times. So, we work on it. We work on it quite a lot. And then, that's, this is what you guys have in front of you, it's the final product. At the end, let me see. Right, on July 27th, so just a week ago, was the final time that this item came to the planning commission, and after we did all the amendments and staff worked on it, they gave us a unanimous recommendation of approval. So, the staff recommends the city council to give the final approval to the amendments today.
Any other questions for Daniel? Stay close, public hearing.
Hey.
This looks fantastic. Thank you, Daniel.
So, this is a continued public hearing, so we'll open it this time to the public.
Neil's Fugel. I'm curious to know if, Dear to My Heart, the owners of that are aware of this modification in its own.
Hundred percent sure. We sent notices to everyone in the zone, so we, I hope they review them and they sell them. For example, the, at the beginning, when the item came to us, only this, the owner of, or the Realtor for these properties came to me, but eventually, the owner of this property gave me a phone call. I, staff never received a comment or anything from Close to My Heart. However, none of the, what they have, nothing will fall into noncompliance or something like that. Everything will be okay with them.
My concern is that they, Dear to My Heart, may be concerned that their setback along their side would be influenced in terms of what they've built. There's not as large a buffer.
Right. So, if we, Close to My Heart goes all the way to right here, okay? So, these parcels have frontage right here, along this road right here. So, the setback was only reduced by five feet in regards to the property from Close to My Heart. It went from 25 feet to 20 feet. So, in relation to the properties that are not Close to My Heart, and Close to My Heart is, the difference is only five feet on setbacks.
And Close to My Heart owns all the way to the south of the yellow line?
Till right here.
To the east.
But to the south.
Yes, all the way to the south, correct, which are also city limits.
All right. That's all I have. Thanks.
Nick News. Anyone else? All right, CNN will close the public hearing at this time and bring it back up here to the council for additional discussion or a motion.
I do have a question. So, that's Linden on the south side.
Yes, ma'am.
What is that zoned for Linden right there? Do we know?
No, that's a good one.
I would guess it's commercial use, that's how it's developing at this point.
Okay.
They have, as you get closer up to Geneva Road, it's, looks like a little bit, it's office space, but maybe...
Light manufacturing.
Maybe light manufacturing, so.
Okay.
I think it'll be consistent with...
For the zone, that's, I was just making sure that Linden was not gonna be angry that we were killing cows and, no, I'm joking. Oh, please don't comment on that.
Daniel's going to, Daniel.
Strike that from the record.
Mayor Pro Tem, one of the, one of the ideas that came to the table, for example, from the applicant, he was asking for a zero setback, but staff kept in mind that we don't know what happened here with Linden exactly, so we don't know if in the future they will go to residential. So, we stick to the setbacks, but the applicant, in some cases, were asking for a zero setback, and staff strongly recommend to keep the setback as it is. And finally, keep, keeping in mind that Linden may have some residential in the future there, but the setback is appropriate.
So, our back setback was 10, or 25?
25.
25?
25.
Any other discussion or a motion?
I'll make a motion. We're done with discussions. Counsel, I have moved that we adopt ordinance 2017-37, amending city code section 10-12-Article A, Business and Manufacturing Park Zone, BMP, by revising and reorganizing the provisions regarding permitted and conditional uses as well as the various zoning requirements on the strength of the unanimous recommendation of our planning commission.
Motion by Ben.
Second.
Second by Diana. By voice, Lynn?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Thank you. Took your backup, Daniel. So, this is item, action items ready for vote, 10A, to consider for approval of final plant for a proposed flag lot subdivision that includes four lots named Calder's Cottages on property located approximately 585, 585 North, 400 East, and R18 Single Family Residential Zone, Monkey Town.
Mayor Pro Tem, Council, this item, it's, I wish all items were as simple as this one. This is a subdivision plot. It includes four lots, that's why it's brought to the council for approval. Just a couple, I think, a couple weeks, a couple months ago, actually, we passed a new ordinance that if it was three or less, then it went straight to the city engineer.
That's right.
However, this one includes four lots. The applicant is Dick Calder. The property is located at 585 North, 400 East. The zone is R18 Single Family Residential with each lot to be at least 8,000 square feet. Pretty straightforward. This is the zoning map or the place where the lots will be. Here's an aerial view. We can see there's a lot of empty spot right there that will be used for something like that. So, that's the plot. That's what it is. It's a flag lot subdivision. This item came to the planning commission on May 11, 2017. There were some items that they needed to be worked with public works, with engineering, and the applicant has been working toward them, but that's the final result of the appropriate plot, or the proposed plot. Planning commission recommends approval unanimously, and staff recommends approval of this plot as well.
Thank you. Any questions for Daniel? Just your neck of the woods, Lynn, a little bit. This is kind of close to you.
Yeah. Get on.
All right. With no questions, I guess we'll entertain a motion.
Move that we approve a final plot for a proposed flag lot subdivision, including four lots named Calder Cottages on property located approximately 585 North, 400 East, in the R18 Single Family Residential Zone of the Monkey Town neighborhood.
Motion by Ben.
Second.
Second by Lynn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item B, to consider for adoption, ordinance 2017-36, amending city code section 8-4A-19, policy regarding service laterals, creating an exception for a single service lateral in one and two family dwelling structures as approved by the city engineer in Pleasant Grove City Code. The exception would allow a single sewer lateral to service a two-family dwelling if any street or roadway that is less than five years old would need to be excavated in order to install a second service lateral and providing for effective date. Marty?
Just connect here. All right. We are moving forward with a lot of street projects, and we anticipate to continue to do this, and one of the issues that we have is cutting streets, and we try to avoid that at all expense possible. What this text amendment to this ordinance does is it allows us to have a little bit of say as to when we actually have this occur, and as our current ordinance reads, currently, it says under item one there, for one and two family dwelling structures, a separate service lateral for each dwelling unit is required. And what happens is when somebody comes in with a twin home, then they are required to do two service laterals, one to each unit. Even though it's on the same lot, they share a same wall, they have to have two service laterals to try to separate those units, and also the liability, and it's more protection for each of the owners, more so than for the city, because the sewer laterals are theirs all the way out to the main line. In this instance, what we would like to do is if we have an existing home or a lot that has a sewer stub into it, we would like to be able to say, okay, if you can come in with an acceptable shared use agreement that would be recorded against the twin lot home, then we would allow you to operate off the single sewer lateral to that lot. Now, what that means is that they still have to, what this text is saying, is they still have to separate it. Once they get to the property, it would separate and go in as two separate laterals to each of the homes, and the point that it connects has to be within 10 feet of the front property line. And so, it just allows us to not cut into those streets under these circumstances. It's a very slim area. You can see streets less than five years old would be able to be applicable to this part of the ordinance, and we could allow this under those circumstances. So, again, we feel like it's a necessary thing to be able to help promote not cutting into the streets, and that's why this is coming forward.
Thanks, Mary. Any questions?
So, that one lateral is a large enough pipe to handle both structures?
Yes.
Okay.
Typically, a four-inch lateral would handle a twin home structure without any problem.
And 10 feet in, so this is, would be at the cost of the homeowner completely, or how does that work?
So, typically, the sewer laterals are stubbed into the property about 10 foot. They would have to make that connection where they come together within that 10 feet from the property line.
Okay. And we're just talking sewer?
This is only sewer.
Okay. Would this work with other utilities as well?
So, we already combine some of our water meters and PI services. We have what's called a double service for pressure irrigation. We also create a series of cans, meter cans, when we have multiple meters going to like a fourplex, a duplex, so we can bring them in in one line, separate them out into two meters. All of that is actually the cities to the meter, and then from there, we can provide the individual service to each of the units. So, it's not really applicable to those other types of services, but it's very applicable to sewer, because it does, it is the private property owner's responsibility, we want to try to protect.
More flexibility. Okay. And no cut.
Anything else? Daniel, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2017-36, amending city code section 8-4A-19, policy regarding service laterals, creating an exception for a single service lateral in one and two family dwelling structures as approved by the city engineer in the Pleasant Grove City Code. The exception would allow a single sewer lateral to service a two-family dwelling if any street or roadway that is less than five years old would need to be excavated in order to install a second service lateral and providing for effective date.
Motion by Diana?
Second.
Second by Ben, by voice. Lynn?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And Ben?
Yes.
Okay. Look at that, we're almost there. So, item 11, no items for discussion. Review and discuss August 8th. If you can pull your ugly yellow out here. Let's see, Scott, we have a public hearing for, to consider... Scott, we have a public hearing for, to consider the request of Kevin Ledlow for approval of a site plan in the Grove area. The proposed site plan is for a hotel on the property located at 416 South Evermore Lane in the Grove Zone, commercial sales subject.
Just so counsel understands, we, next week is actually a work session. We will have a couple items. Items five and six will be designated as action items for the city council. Five will be a public hearing in regards to this hotel that is being proposed for our community. This hotel has taken advantage of what we call our development fast track. They are very excited to get digging in the ground and get construction started soon. So because of that, they've requested that, so this public hearing will be for the site plan approval, and the city council will handle the public hearing. Because of that, they do not go through the planning commission. This will be the first look for the city regarding the site plan. So that's what item five is. Item six is some agreements that we're working on, some property owners on 900 South as we're redoing that road, and some of the storm drain improvements along there as well. We were working with a couple residents to ensure that we can get some additional curb and gutter, Marty, that we're, we're working with through them. So those are a couple time-sensitive items, and that's why we have them on a work session. Item number seven is a request from a resident with some concerns regarding the fireworks. As Tina has researched it, as a city, we really have very little authority to change firework regulations. That is controlled by the state. It's pretty clear in the code that cities aren't allowed to do much with that. We do know some other cities banned fireworks this last season, and whether they used a provision that we're not aware of, or whatever. But the citizen requested a discussion, so we'll have a discussion. I invited Representative Green to come to, and he hasn't replied back whether he's going to be able to make it or not, so that he can give us the state perspective. On the initial email that the, that the resident sent, Representative Green did reply to her and let her know that the state was, has received a lot of inquiries, and that they would have this in the 2018 legislative session, they'd be discussing fireworks. So we'll have it on as a work session item, and we'll have some, a little bit of discussion about that. So I kind of gave you the overview, and we'll get a little more detail next week.
One thing that might be useful in that discussion is to have some context of our special event permitting process here in the city. That may give us some opportunity to have some influence in what happens, whether or not we grant the special event permits that are requested.
Okay. Yeah, we'll talk about that process and what it entails. That's right, I believe in her email, she referenced some of the special events. Got it. Thank you. That's all we have for next week.
And I don't see anything, you mentioned August 22nd, but I think that's forming, right?
Yeah, August 22nd. Just so you're aware, talking with Councilmember Lamone, we were going to have a road discussion today. She asked if that get moved to August 22nd. So we will have a history of the roads and kind of a reminder and refresher for people where we've come in the last four years on, on some of these issues. So, is that fair, Sid? So we'll, we'll talk about that on August 22nd.
Will that be our only item that day?
Um, I don't remember.
I'm sure a few more things will come up.
We're three weeks away, so yes. And also, and this is again looking into the future, the 29th of August, we will need to canvass the primary election, so we will have a very brief meeting to canvass those results. We will not intend to have any other items on that agenda.
Okay, that's on record, Scott. You said that.
I, it's on record, I said it.
Okay. Okay. All right, moving on. Neighborhood and staff business. Libby, you have anything? Okay. Daniel?
Scott, is it appropriate if I, sorry, is it appropriate if I show the map of the future item that I'm going to bring up? Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Sorry, I cut Daniel off the process, but he can give you a little bit of a sneak preview on what you're going to see next week, so.
Once the computer works again.
Does Daniel know how tall, how many stories? Like, how, how many stories, how many floors?
It's four.
Four?
There we go.
There you go. So, so yeah, Scott mentioned before, an applicant has taken a...
Why don't you go ahead and go up to the podium.
Okay.
Yeah, my bill is here for you.
Okay, as Scott mentioned before, we have an applicant who has taken advantage of our fast track system that we already have in the, in the city. So this allows for a project to come straight to city council, skips planning commission, but we will have a public hearing still here at the planning commission. It's a project in the Grove. It's for a, for a hotel. Is it the first hotel here?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep. So this is kind of like the area where it will be located, right here. We already receive plans, we are reviewing them. I'd like to give props to the engineering department. They've been amazing to work with, with staff, with planning staff. It's incredible the amount of time, how we shortened it, and how fast we're getting this process to go through. The applicant paid 150% of the, the fee, but we're getting there. We're getting there. So today, we had our second meeting with the applicant and second review already, so we're getting there, considering that they applied like three weeks ago or something around there. Here's a little idea of what the site plan is going to look like. I didn't include a lot of plans because I want to keep, keep the council on their toes. No. This is the one that I put on the last second, but it's a, it's a four-story building. Tomorrow, they will go through the DRB, to Design Review Board, so they will get the design standards reviewed and recommended. So I'm pretty excited about this project. It's coming, it's coming. That's what I have for, for next week.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's exciting news. We're, sorry, you can ask Danny if you want to meet with him and ask him, so.
It's just to the north of the Holiday Oil on PG Boulevard.
Yes, if, if you can see the map, that one right there, it's going to be in this area right there.
Right there?
Imagination, there you go.
You know, you, you can meet with me at the end, but I, I...
Okay, perfect. Sorry about that.
Marty, anything?
Just, ongoing projects. We're finishing up with the sewer line on 700 South, jump back onto the water line, do a bore under the railroad tracks, and road excavation starts on Monday on 700 South. So that's going to continue to, we're going to be full-depth excavation down 20, what, 23 inches or so. So it's going to be torn up. Two lanes will be tried, we'll try to maintain through there. 900 South, the sewer line's done, water line's about a quarter of the way done, so going forward on that. And as soon as they get done, partially with 700 South, they're going to be jumping a crew back up to do 900 South. The press irrigation water tank, the Walker tank, if you have a chance to go drive by there, it's a pretty cool site. There's a lot of dirt, there's a lot. It's a deep excavation, shoring walls. They're starting on the concrete work this next week. Everything's all ready to go. They've got the outlet pipings in the ground and, and moving forward. So a lot of things happening there. Tons of development happening throughout the city. All of the projects are active, so apologize for things being torn up, but things are moving forward, and, and I think there's, moving in a positive direction. We're excited about that and getting things done, so.
Thank you, Marty. Good news. David?
David.
Deon? No? Chief? Chief Smith?
Yes. As I've told you before, we do quite a bit of work with the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force through the Attorney General's Office. This, we just had to resubmit for a grant that is available each year through that program. As, our agency is actually the North County affiliate with the Attorney General's Office, so anything Linden and North, where they're go-to for crimes that are being, that are against children on the internet, whether it's solicitation, or pornography, or, but anyway, through that grant, we were just awarded $25,000 for this year.
Wow, nice. Congratulations. Sherry?
Our, the library summer reading program did a service project, I mentioned it before, doing backpacks. They talked to Tabitha's Way and asked what the needs were, and they suggested backpacks with school supplies inside them for kids who never get new backpacks, and it's hard to get the supplies they need. So we did a backpack drive, asking for donations for the supplies inside and backpacks, and some, a lot of people gave money, and we, the kids put together 115 backpacks. Yeah, the summer reading theme was build a better world, and hopefully the kids learned a little bit about doing that.
I kind of like the idea of continuing a service project every, you know, I mean, when possible. I know you're super busy with the programs and everything going on, but I think that's cool that you were able to find time to do that and then get back to another area of the community. So I think that's awesome. Thank you, Sherry.
Thanks.
Denise, you're up. Scott, I think we've heard enough from you.
I got more.
Okay.
I get paid by the work, too.
You do?
So, here we go.
I'm going.
We should rethink our pay structure. Next week will be the last city council meeting in this building. So with permission of the city council, we'd like to get a cake or something like that, and when our meeting's over, have a little celebration, and with the understanding that we will be moving all this stuff out, we'll be moving the sound system out, we're moving it into the library. For the next year, we'll be having our meetings there, so that August 22nd meeting will be in the library.
Sherry, you okay with all this?
Got it.
Okay.
And we're able to work with PG players around their schedule and...
Well, we're not using the auditorium. We're going to use the big room down there.
Oh, okay. Perfect.
And we, we have it all planned out and set up, but I thought it would be appropriate if we just took a little moment to celebrate the use of...
Moment of silence?
Kind of this room. I mean, really, the whole building and everything. The old wreck had a nice little send-off, but there's been a lot that's happened in this room in regards to city council meetings over the last, you know, a lot of years. So we're going to think of something to celebrate that.
Sounds good.
Just wanted to let you know, but next week will be the last council meeting in this room.
Do that, and bring enough for the public.
Oh, yes, it'll be for everybody.
Perfect.
Yep.
Well, I have had a question a lot, Scott, from people about what we'll do for video streaming in that new location. Do we have a plan for that?
We're still working on the logistics. The intent is to just take our system over and plug it in, and again, we're working with the sound guys right now to get that figured out. So we're hoping to have that all situated by the 22nd. If we have some glitches, we might have a meeting or two where we can't stream, but the intent is, is to make sure we get that set up.
Thanks.
And the library's happy to take donations to fix, improve the bathrooms, et cetera.
You're on record, good. Okay. Tina?
Did you want to mention?
Kristi had to ask you, but, you know, you look happy. Kathy? Diana?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Um, oh, we had a wonderful afternoon today. We had about 250 people at the official ribbon-cutting of the St. John Grove Tower, which is under construction. I love cranes. It's a sign of rising. And we had the governor, we had, I mean, help me out here.
Ed St. John himself?
Ed. So I call him Ed.
Yeah, so do I.
Okay.
He's on a plane, you're okay.
Yeah, is he traveling quickly? There was actually a contract, Caldwell Banker, their entire real estate, they're, are they the largest commercial Realtor in the state?
Intermountain.
Intermountain?
Yeah.
So to sign that contract, Brandon had flown in some skydivers that came in. One was in a suit with a little briefcase. It's just amazing. It was, it was a wonderful, beautiful moment. I was actually at a table with some people who are, they've got their location, they're coming, and it, Pleasant Grove is rising, and today was a complete testimony of that.
They soft-announced, for good.
Did they soft-announce?
They said it at the...
Yeah, they did. Can I soft-announce even on a location or not yet?
You can say whatever you want. They, they even said that was a little bit of a premature discussion.
Okay. I am not going to be premature.
And then we...
But talk to me later.
Sid?
Yeah, to add to what Diana said, that was a great afternoon. I was up late there night, Footloose was on TV, and they showed the scene where they go past the flour mills in Lehigh, and it looks a lot different. The only thing out there at that time was literally the flour mills, and it's the same with Pleasant Grove. It's not the same, but change is good, and it's great to see business coming in and people doing their startup companies here, and it's thriving, and the governor recognizes that, and our residents recognize that. It's definitely not the same Pleasant Grove that I grew up in, but I'm okay with that, because it means that we are rising and we're growing, and we're trying to support our residents. And another movie line is if you build it, they will come, and we're building it, and they're coming, and I'm excited. So that was a good day today. And thank you to Scott and everyone who helped get St. John's here, and it's, it's awesome for Pleasant Grove, so thank you.
Things are going in a great direction. It's been a good day. Thanks.
Yeah, it was an awesome lunch. It was nice to see so much of our city staff be supportive of that event, too. Thank you for those that could make it. It was awesome.
I don't, I don't have anything. I think they stole all my words, so I'm good. So you have anything else?
Well, just one thing, sorry.
Scott?
The food was really awesome at this thing today.
R and R barbecue.
It is R and R barbecue. Who is coming to Pleasant Grove City?
Yes.
And they didn't necessarily say, I know they're in the process of working with planning to get all their approvals as far as that's concerned, but that was really good food, and it's glad, we're glad that they're coming to our community.
But not only are they coming, this is going to be a flagship store. This is going to be one of their largest restaurants for catering and, and other events, so it's awesome.
Yep.
I didn't have the brisket. Did anybody have the brisket?
I did.
Yeah.
It was awesome.
You missed out, Diana. It was the best.
It's the pork. I felt like a, like I'm not a vegetarian, clearly, but that was a lot of meat.
So really quick on the calendar, we already talked about next week's work session, per se, and then I think everyone's probably received their mail-in ballots and are probably voting, so be active. And with that, we'll take a motion.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Motion by Diana?
Second.
Second by Ben. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wow.
Too quick for me.